Okay, with that, let's open the July 12th, no, July 26th meeting of the Rutland Planning Board. And, by the way, this meeting is being recorded for broadcast on local cable TV and YouTube. Okay, first thing is minutes of July 12th?
Motion to accept the minutes of July 12th?
I would accept with discussion.
Was that a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
On the last paragraph on page two by law subcommittee updates, it says that she, referring to me, provided sample bylaws from other municipalities and that actually those came from the packet that David George provided, which I think I'd like to give him credit. So...
How about she prepared, sampled bylaws prepared by Dave? Or collected by Dave?
Whatever, yeah.
Fair enough.
Yep?
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay, Tamika?
Got it.
And it was very nice of you to help to call that research.
I appreciate that. We're trying to help the bylaw subcommittee get some work.
Definitely.
I have one question. Do we happen to have a check number for that $400 that we could, you know?
I have it, but not on me.
That's your check from last time?
That is correct.
I have, we have that, we can get that to you tomorrow.
Well, I don't need it tomorrow. I just wanted to somehow get into the minutes.
Sure, we can.
Into that first paragraph.
We can look at how things are going.
Says the fee of $400 check number.
Put it in this week's minutes. The Westerly side of Welchav check, because we didn't officially receive it till after the meeting, right?
Right.
So put it in this week's minutes. That way it'll be in there.
All right.
Good point.
That way we can cover it.
Is there anything further on the minutes? And all in favor?
Aye.
And we have no A and Rs. And I guess our next thing is, I'm assuming this is the gentleman from DCR?
Yep.
To talk about watershed protection and, I don't know, let your little share up. So.
So, you guys like to know?
Eleanor has been to one of our meetings, Jeff Lacy's place, DCR. And my main reason for asking you to put on is some updates on watershed and if anybody else has any questions or whatever, but I feel that Quabbin District, watershed district, is in charge of Rutland. Even though parts of Rutland and other territories were watershed, like Wachusett, Glenwood, and so forth. But they gave, I guess Princeton is what chooses it instead of being half and half like we are. And now we're Quabbin. That's something which I did not know until fairly recent, so. And I feel that Jeff Lacy did a lot for us over the years and I just want Eleanor to be proud of what's going on. And my main thing here was Zone A. And if you could tell us a little bit about Zone A, because being on the A and Commission, I came up with a piece of property and there was quite a bit of Zone A in it. No, so.
Yeah, right, so the Zone A is...
Before we do that, for our minutes, name, rank, and serial number.
Oh, I barely know Allen, so I got his info.
I just wanted to make sure that we had...
You want to still briefly introduce yourself on a public record to benefit of the law?
Yeah, Allen Rantala, Regional Planner for DCR for the Quabbin and Way River Waterships. So the Zone A is a DEP regulation, so that's zero to 200 feet from a tributary. I think those regulations were brought into place around 2007, 2008. They have more of an impact around the area than actually DCR's primary protection zone, which is still zero to 200 feet from a tributary, but not all Zone As are primary protection zones. So when you look at a map side by side, you're going to see a lot of Zone As and a lot less primary protection zones. So it is confusing.
Very much so.
Yeah.
Because being on a planning board when things come up, you know, which direction do you head?
Right.
Or do you just turn around and try to leave it to somebody else? But I always feel that we should have the knowledge and be on board.
Yeah, and sometimes when they overlap, say the DCR's jurisdiction, it's no alteration unless eligible for an exemption or variance is granted. But then you have the Zone A in the same place as a primary protection zone where you just can't have like discharges. There's other rules that I just don't know about. So they do have, you know, differing issues, but in the same area, so.
Now, Allen, do you work, this is the one thing that I've been learning. Do you work with, because I've been understanding that this MEPA requirement is like the first step when they get into the DCR or DEP zones. Is that something you interact with or is that a completely different entity?
Yeah, MEPA is kind of a different entity. However, per the Watershed Protection Act, you have to file for a MEPA for an alteration other than a single-family dwelling. So you would need to have a MEPA certificate to come before us with a variance, completed variance application.
So that has to be, they can't just try to get a DCR or DEP number without having, if it's like a subdivision?
Right.
They need to have a MEPA number before they go in there? Because you go along and you see some A and Rs with the sign that says DEP number 632. They didn't have to get a MEPA, correct? Because it was a single-family home?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, just the subdivisions when they're building. All right, good. Knowledge I needed that I didn't have.
But not all subdivisions. I mean, everything, other projects other than a single-family dwelling. So a municipality or something like that going on, you know, they would have to file as well.
So out of curiosity from my own knowledge, does the, oh, but they've got to be in wetlands area, correct?
No, no, it's just alteration, so within zero to 200 feet.
Okay.
I don't believe it also entails wetlands. I don't remember, actually, so I can look into that and get back.
No, I just, it was just curious, because I was, my next question was going to be, which isn't really our concern, that cell tower thing, is that, any wetlands around it? And do they, is that one of those MEPA requirements that they've got to go through? But I don't, let's just walk away from that.
At the moment, you can work with it.
Yeah, 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 until it becomes a planning board issue because it's on town property.
And by then it'll involve change then?
Yeah.
All right. I'm just kind of curious about planning board's role, responsibility, authority regarding watershed protection.
Um, regarding watershed protection, that I don't know. I mean, like, say, like a relationship with DCR, is that what you're saying or?
Because we've got a CONCOM, right, Norm?
We do have a CONCOM, and it goes through CONCOM, but is there a, could there's something that happened that slipped by and it should have come to us to go through CONCOM? Because there's a lot of information.
Oh, no, we all know that the way to get around things in Rutland is go to the individual department since there's no common get together. We know that.
And that's one of our, that's one of my fears is what's happening, is the fact that it'll hit here first or something like that will come to you later on. And, well, I've already got my permission from them, so. And that's one of the reasons why I took the education.
There's got to be a responsibility to be aware. But again, I don't think we have any direct enforcement power on any of that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't believe so, but I think where the Zone As, the Zone A comes into place, if you're looking at an A and R, if the front is illusory, it might be. If it's a, if it's all swamp or some protected area.
Oh, you're right, Dave, so.
Then the only way to build in it is to show that you have the ability to engineer some solution. If you can't show you have some engineered solution, then that front it doesn't really count for the purpose of access. Therefore, the A and R can be denied if there's some Zone A observation, if you overlay the maps. You know, so I guess that's how it might come into play for the planning board.
That makes sense.
Good point, yeah. Definitely.
But if that's, that's through DEP?
Well, there are the maps, right?
There are, yeah.
You have the map viewer, so I can overlay the maps on top of the GIS, the town has or?
Yeah.
Could you put two sources together?
Yeah, and every time you have a question, just you can reach out to me and I can always work with you guys as well to help you out.
Yeah, we'll have to do that because we've got short-term days on A and Rs. That's the problem.
Twenty-one days or something like that, you know, when they file with the town secretary, we have to make a decision in a very short period of time.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we don't, it's approved by not doing anything in this state, so.
I know this sounds awfully, awfully old-fashioned, but where can we get good quality printed maps?
That's a good one. Everyone's moving away from the paper version.
I know, I know. That's why I said, "Old-fashioned."
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm old-fashioned too, so.
All right, you've got four people on the board here that all say the same thing. I don't care how long, the town's not issuing me an iPad, so I'm not carrying it around, so.
Well, I did print out maps when I first started and brought them to everyone, so if you guys do need another copy, I can try to work on getting you an updated map.
Yeah, we also have a plotter internally.
Yeah, so.
Twenty-five by thirty-six.
Yeah, I could send it to you.
If you send Dave colored PDFs, he can print them.
Okay.
That'd be great.
You know, and you're aware that it's the full size.
Yeah, yeah. Just, I can put it on the roof of the car. Drive around.
And you drive and you've got the map with the same.
Yeah, that way when they pull me over, I wouldn't on a cell phone, I was on a map.
How do you hold your head?
Yeah.
Besides, it's on the roof.
Well, no, no, you get the seat back so you're low riding and then. Yeah, that's a lot of trouble. Sorry, Chief Monaco, I was reading a map. Stop sign of a loop, but.
One of the things that, you know, with the weather being the way it is and kind of dry out and whatever, and being the A and Commission, and also in central Mass, I hear a lot of things, but protection of watershed and because you people own half of Rutland. I think it's 51% is what you own.
Give them on it back.
Be careful, because I'm starting to hear little words about that, you know, can we get part of this back?
You could make some money on a little auction action.
I do know that being on the Way River Advisory Committee, you know, there are a lot of things that are going on. And try to turn over all the minutes to the town and hopefully they cruise through them once in a while. Do you see any changes that might come in the future? Because in the back of my mind, I worry about, I haven't talked to Dan. I don't even know if Dan's still working for him, WRA and Chapday. And he used to put on presentations and slides and everything else. And the auditorium used to be packed with people. He used to come in and see the slides about the aqueduct being built and the sewer system being put in Rutland when they hand dug it and all that down Maple Ave. He had all kinds of pictures of that kind of stuff. But the amount of times that they opened up and allow the water from Way River into the aqueduct. I was going to ask him how many times over the last decade, you know, had they dropped water? Because the water, yes, that's drying up an awful lot and then it doesn't, you know, doesn't reach. Because usually they like it when it's flowing, you know, pretty good, you know, pretty good flow before they'll drop it. I just hope they, someday say, "Well, we don't need it. Let's get rid of it," or something like that, you know. I just hope they're, you guys protect that property. I don't want to see all of a sudden the Commonwealth of Mass coming in and say, "Okay, we're taking this pop bag, we're going to take this," you know.
Right, right.
I feel that future water supply is going to be very desperate. I don't know where Quabbin is right now. I mean, we really isn't that bad for, I know we're in a drought situation here, but I think in the western part of the state, it's a little bit better.
It takes a long, long time for Quabbin to get into a dangerous situation.
But they have. And to the point where they even talked about drawing water out of Connecticut River. They didn't want it, but I mean, we're actually talking about that. I just feel that.
Took like me 20 years to sink. Quabbin's got to have some, need years to probably.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. I know, I've read some stuff about, you know, the quantity that's in there and how long a drought would have to go on.
Yeah, right now, I don't think they're hurting at all.
No, they're not.
The snow's been helping out with the winters, our snow packs.
But like, like, oh, I hate this.
Like even, you know, I read in the paper, like even Worcester reservoirs, they're at like 89% capacity now.
Yeah.
So this one week really didn't kill anybody other than Winchita that seems to have a water problem?
It's not a week. We're seven inches below normal for the week for the year, so.
Had a meeting. Well, it just, I get nervous. I'm old, you know, because I worry about farms. And farms being scoffed up and turned into projects and things like that and.
That is the way of everything's going.
But, like I say, you know, where are you going to get your food? Oh, we go to the grocery store. And to me, for crying out loud, it's also wildlife. To me, one of the bigger things for me is the Wildlife Corridor between Wachusett Reservoir. And we almost had it connected to Pine Hill Reservoir and out to Way River. And unfortunately, MDAR at the time did not go along with the developer and make the extra million dollar that the developer wanted. And if that would have opened up that corridor. So sometime you can take a look at it.
Yeah.
It's from Wachusett, not only Wachusett to Quinnipox and right up in Musqueapog, right over to Pine Hill and Pine Hill out towards Long Pond. And that would have been one heck of a water corridor.
Yeah, that would have been great.
Yeah.
Since I got you live in concert here and this somewhat doesn't pertain to the planning board, but since it's not our jurisdiction, are you working with the RDIC to get that road blessed so they can pave over it and all that stuff? Is that you that they're working with or?
Where is this?
Uh, over in the RDIC, the Rutland Industrial Development Area.
Yep.
It's not you. I thought it was.
Oh, off of 56, is that the?
No, yes, South 56.
It comes off of, Rutland Heights Road comes off of 56 and it's a branch that goes to the lower part.
Yep.
And then that's the one that.
And there's an old paved, quasi-paved road that goes back to the dam area. And the developer slash the RDIC was going to work with, I thought, DCR. They were going to hire Jeff.
They were going to hire Jeff, or at least Mike Sullivan had requested Jeff, but they themselves had somebody else from DCR that they were working with.
That's why I wondered if Allen had any interaction.
Is this where they were doing solar panels and then?
Yeah, it turned into a subdivision.
Senior housing?
Yeah, senior housing.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they were going to talk to you guys about getting blessed so they could repave it since it's paved, it was paved originally.
Right, right. Yeah, walked out there, actually.
Okay, I just was curious where that, if you were involved in that, that was my only.
Yeah, they did apply through us. That's still, I think that just came in the mail, actually.
Okay. The process is gone is all I was curious about. You were involved. That was the only thing I wanted to find out. I don't need any more information other than it's moving forward. That's a good sign.
Because the town is still involved with that road. It's not going to be, not only for the senior housing, but also the town owns the dam. And also there is a dump, landfill that's been, you know, DEP has had their finger on it. It's going to be mowed every other year and all that kind of stuff, so we've got to keep an eye on it, so.
All right, that's all my questions.
Yeah, that, I was on CONCOM when they were doing that and I offered them questions because I don't think they put everything into that landfill.
Ambush, ambushing done.
But anyway, that's minor details. Well, other than that, I think that was about all. I mean, I'm glad to get a Zone, a Zone map and going on from there.
And if you ever have questions, you have my contact info, so you can just reach out anytime. I'll try to get back to you as soon as possible.
All right, and if you do hear, I know Jeff was in regulations. I mean, he opened space. I mean, he, he was really big on that. So if you ever come across something and you think that it might be worthwhile for us to look into?
Yeah, actually, that's what I'm writing down right now.
Or add, or add to our bylaws. And if the town's done something that makes sense and wouldn't be a bad idea to get Rutland involved in that?
Yep.
Shoot it to us or to David or to Peter?
Peter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or all three, that way you won't miss.
Yeah, by all means. Well, I appreciate you coming.
Definitely, definitely. You guys want me out.
All right, very good.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.
And it's good, he's young enough, he's going to outlast me.
And me.
And me.
The only one he has to worry is Tamika.
Okay, that's all.
Denied.
Is next?
I'll keep plowing. How did you know what I said? You just said it.
Keep plowing?
Yeah. We're going to request HOA and not turn it over to the town?
I should back bill the town if they don't, because I plowed that part. Actually, this year was pretty good. You must have got a new guy in the DPW because the first three storms, I went down there, it was already plowed. I'm like, whoop. Am I going to say another?
Thank you for your support.
Well, anyway.
Getting lively again?
Yeah.
So obviously this is the.
We don't find.
Obviously, it's been a long time. '06, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
And I think the date of it was '05, 121505 for the application.
Right.
Yeah, because I don't even think I was on the board when this got pushed because I see Tommy DeFault's name all over it.
Yeah. So obviously, once we built it, we hit one of our recessions and we didn't really want to pay the money to talk code it at that time because we didn't really have it, to be honest with you. So we held back and then we talk coded it and then it was like, well, we got to get this approved. And then come October, like, oh, we never did the payment. Then we waited a year and then next thing you know, so I thought about it this winter and that's why I started doing this. We did have Jay go down and he had to go. I forget when the date is on there.
2015?
Yeah. And at that time, he had us raise, the spillway was too low in the back. It wasn't a weep hole and the 18-inch pipe was missing a three-quarter inch hole. I don't know what that hole was supposed to do, but it needed that, you know. The engineers asked for it and had to add, so, but we did all that stuff. And then we just never came back, so now I figure it's plenty early. Start the conversation, see what I got to get done or find or do or whatever, so we can try to get this thing.
Do we just need to send this to Quinn, have him review it?
Yeah.
And then they come back and if comments work with you to get, you and Finley to get the comments squared away?
And then go from there.
Once they're blessed, then, do we get to send this to the select board and let them know?
I would imagine. I know Gary had gone through there back in the day, but I think that's obviously late, so we probably have to have Joe go take a look at it.
Yeah, the first thing is you have to, Quinn.
Yeah, Quinn.
Normal processes. We have Quinn, he goes in, he writes his report, and then we, first of all, if he finds any deficiencies.
That's why we start earlier, we can get it on the document. So do you want, so I'll email? I gave that to you now?
And following that, then we usually do kind of a joint final inspection with Quinn, planning board, and DPW director.
Final inspection, okay.
And then it's.
We filled out a document?
Uh, well.
To send to the select board?
Select board, they put it on the warrant.
We don't send it to the select board, but.
Don't they have to lay it out?
Yes, they have to lay it out. The question is.
Is there, we don't have to have a hearing, do we?
We do.
We do.
Okay, the. Okay. You send in the request with a layout to the select board. Once they receive it, then they tell us to hold a public hearing.
Oh, so we got informed now, okay.
No, no. Well, technically, they should know what they're doing. Let's put it that way.
Technically.
I like that word.
So we hold a public hearing, obviously take, you know, whatever input there is and then we make a recommendation to the select board. Well, actually, not to the select, well, to the select board, but to town meeting.
Sure.
And they have to write up a warrant. You do have to have, oh, one of them that brother also put that on, ASBIL plans.
Yep.
I don't know, did we ever receive ASBIL plans?
Yeah, I got them right here.
You have the plans that, are these right here?
Those of 2015 when he did the ASBIL.
Nothing's changed, Dave. That's what I would send to Quinn, is these ASBILs.
Yeah, that's not. Well, I got to talk to Jay first because he might have to go reshoot that spillway. I don't know if he ever went back once we fixed it, you know what I mean, to make that note.
And that's just a rev of his ASBILs.
Yeah, he'll just go back and.
It's labeled as an ASBIL plan, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I'll call Jay tomorrow and tell him that they're going to get the plan, but I don't think he adjusted that, so he should readjust it, change that, then give it to. Because the first thing he's going to find is the same things that are wrong.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, right, so.
That'll save us a lot of discussion if everything's.
Absolutely. And then I just, I got to go knock on the homeowner's door there that has that pond that nicely decorated it with all this stuff that has to get chopped down. Oops.
Okay, the only other thing, this is in talking with Dave. He said that you were under the impression that the town would be taking the roadway, the town would also be taking the detention point.
Yeah, the only reason I say that is, I'll talk to Jay again. He had a, I got to find out, the plan that was actually accepted, the original plan that was submitted was on there and I couldn't find in here. The only waiver in here was, I forget now.
There were two of them. It was the, it was the Berms and the Cul-de-sac. There were two of them, it was the, uh, cul, it was the Berms and the cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac, yeah, yeah, that's right, so, not that it matters, I was just curious about that.
I don't, I guess first of all, I don't recall that we have ever accepted.
With, with they were in that, so it was probably like the first revision he sent in, where you guys probably said no, so.
I don't, I don't know that, but, uh, i- if you still want that to be, you're gonna have to supply us with something.
Well, I gotta find, yeah, he's gonna, we're gonna find out.
Cause like, that's very unusual.
Yeah, and there's nothing on this plan for notes saying.
Yeah.
I just thought I'd look over these little ones real quick, and I don't see anything.
I'm assuming, assuming, assuming.
So have you ever cleaned out that detention pond?
There's nothing cleaned out, there's never been anything in it. Oh, you mean the shrubs, the trees and stuff?
Other than the trees.
When we were still, when we still owned it, yeah, but, you know, we don't, we don't own any, so it's just on the homeowner's land. With evenings, you know?
There isn't, isn't.
Peter, well, so the back one is Peter Crane's, that's his lot, and, uh, we went in there.
The lower left?
Yeah, we went in there, cause the, coming off of the cul-de-sac, there's like a riprap spillway.
Yeah.
It was done incorrectly, it was like a heap of riprap instead of a lined riprap, so we had to go in there and cut all the trees and he didn't care, you know, he doesn't, it's in the back. This guy up on the roadway by the, by Campbell Street.
Yeah.
He's got some, some sort of landscaping going on in there that he tried to do, nothing too fancy, but I know there's like birch trees growing in there and stuff that have to get taken out.
They gotta go, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever happened to the one, uh, but down by Treasure Valley?
Oh, and that little subdivision back there?
Little subdivision that town had.
That when you drive in, it's on the right?
Yes.
I remember that when walking that.
Yeah.
And there were trees growing in the middle of it and, uh, shrubs on the side.
Yes, and they had a garden in there originally.
Yeah, I was like.
Well, they didn't have to water it that much.
No. Water.
Wait, don't, don't plants wash out? Wait, on the, some of the real big major storms, cause there was a stone lined at the block, you know, the rinse time, you'd see water in the stone, but never where it built up to a spillway or anything like that, but.
I'd say get the process started.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have houses on these lots?
Oh, they're all, they've been living there for years, yeah.
Yeah, so everything is settled.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, they've all, I mean, we put the road in oh six, I wanna say, when we did it, and we built, I think it was two years later, there were two, oh eight, by oh eight, there wasn't a house lot left. It's only, there's, all we really did there was we created basically two house lots, is all we ended up doing, because that was still an A and R on Campbell Street.
Yeah.
And then if you look, by that retention on the lower left is that access strip, that's just, his frontage is up on twelve, but that was just a way to give him a little better driveway, cause of that hill coming across from Barrickins old property.
Yeah.
You know, that's, right, so that was his access, so it gave us a better house lot on twelve, and it gave us two lots, cause that was all it was originally. So those three houses were built as soon as the road was put in. Well, three lots, I'm sorry, three lots in the driveway.
Now, Peter said that you had, at least fairly recently, had it repaved.
We did the top coat probably six years, eight years ago, something like that, six, eight years. That may be recent, time flies by, you know, it's a quiet little cul-de-sac, he doesn't.
Do we still have the bond on this thing, that ten percent bond on this?
I would imagine.
That's, that was gonna ask Norm, we got, we got a sixteen year old bond that somebody needs to find.
At this point, I just don't wanna plow, I'll deal with that later.
No, I just, I like the I's dotted and T's crossed.
Have you seen that at all, Nate's way?
No.
We do have, we do have an account.
Hope you have to check with Becky for the town accountant on that.
I think Tamika was in eighth grade.
Yeah, I just, I mean, Dave, just to get it shut down and turned over.
Yeah.
Cause if, once the road gets accepted, we have to hold it for twelve months, and then after that, all, it goes back to you. What's that?
Ten percent of it.
Ten percent, yeah, yeah. But the question is, what else is on that bond, and has there been a bond reduction or anything? I mean, you could have a hundred thousand dollar bond that you don't know about.
Bonus, go to Foxwoods.
Well, now the, uh, what did we find out from Clea, the, uh, bank people consider bonds as part of your debt ratio.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I didn't know that, as of, after oh eight, as of oh eight, bonds were not considered part of the debt ratio.
Oh six.
Okay, yeah. So, but if you've got one, that's the only reason I was bringing it up.
Yeah, I wouldn't matter, I mean, you know, I wasn't really involved in any of the planning of this, my, my father kinda did that now and then, cause he's eighty, so I told him stay home, I'll come deal with it. Good idea, Dave.
Very good idea. It's a pleasure, always.
Do you recall, Dave, we have a notebook on Nate's way?
I even look, I figured we'd just get this process started at this level, and then go in and look for the, any other information that what the board would like.
Hopefully, that might provide information.
Although, offhand, I haven't seen one, but.
Never really looked for it either, yeah. I think the best thing I can do is call Finley tomorrow, make sure that the Asbeld is current to the stuff that we fixed, and then give us that copy if he's not, the new one, and then that can go to.
You could ask Dave also, cause Finley probably prepared any bond reductions for you, if he's got any paperwork on his last bond reduction.
Uh, when I asked him for this plan.
He did a hem and a haw?
I think that was three computers ago.
So, he did find it, but, um, yeah.
We'll see what we can.
If he has anything he can add to this.
Yeah, that was one thing I was thinking, he's probably had to do.
He might have something, yeah. Would that be, that might be recorded too, or something, is that, you know?
No, it's just, it would be minutes, and that's about it, yeah.
We'll wait on that possibly updated plan before contacting Quinn?
Uh, sure.
Or, we could ask him to go out and take a look.
Well, for him to take a look, is he gonna set up and shoot? Does he believe he might do his own shooting, or does he just believe the engineer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's a visual inspection.
All right, well, then that's fine, you can probably do that, but.
Well, if you wanna go, well, you wanna stop the conversation, wait immediately?
Is this something that we can start?
Be one thing, you know, if we could wrap this thing up before.
For a full town meeting?
For a full town meeting.
That'd be nice.
I know we put all the, you know, all the granite in the fronts all in and all that stuff, so I don't really.
Just, just beware, you know what happened at annual town meeting with Clea's.
Yeah, do, be at this meeting to defend any questions that come up on the road, okay? And don't walk out until it's approved.
I heard all about it.
Yeah.
I still don't believe that.
Have we ever done, and I'm asking this cause I don't know, um, to move this along, have Finley meet Quinn out there with the latest Asbeld? Or does?
Might have some questions answered.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, kill two birds with one stone. It's a question, I was gonna say, ask Quinn and see if that helps them, or if, if they've got a process they wanna follow.
Right, in terms of a meeting, did you tell me this was deceptive, well?
They're all deceptive, well, yeah.
So, uh, would you need the DPW director for anything?
Yeah, there's still drainage and all that, he's gonna wanna agree with them, sure.
So you really would have all the DPW, Quinn, and possibly the applicant?
I, I just, I think maybe, because this isn't a, a twenty house subdivision.
This seems like you could kill it in like three hours.
Yeah, no, it's not very big.
We, we usually wait on DPW for the final ones.
Yeah, I would think if, cause I'm thinking, I know they're gonna want the ponds cleared, so I should probably at least clear that, you know what I mean, before, that's gonna be like.
I'd just like to get this on the full town meeting.
Me too.
Especially if you got Peter Crane.
Since you're here in July, I'm really happy.
As far as I know, everybody on the road is hoping the town takes the road. Not, I don't know why, cause I plow it usually before the town comes down the street, but.
Now, there's no homeowners association.
Good try, but no. Will you condoneize it?
That'd be a tough on the three houses.
Yeah.
So do you have president, vice president, and secretary of the three homeowners?
Right? You don't have a choice, you're on the board.
Yeah.
I'm not particularly known as a homeowners association.
I know, right?
All right, so I'll call Finley, and, uh, and I'll be in touch with you, I don't know how soon he can go out there, I don't know what his schedule's like, so hopefully he can find a day, I don't know how long it would take. Then I'll let you know when he's going, and then we'll find out what Quinn, if he wants it.
That's right.
I'm out, in the meantime, I'll go talk to the, uh, well, I see, talk to Peter constantly, but the other homeowner, and tell him I gotta go in there and clean out everything, so at least that would be done when they get there.
Yeah, the birch trees at the bottom of the detention pond are moving on to bigger and better places.
Yeah, they have a fireplace, we can put them in there.
Yeah, there you go.
We were just waiting for them to get big enough.
Yeah, well, sixteen years, that might be a good.
Might be a good tree.
Yeah.
All the time.
Might get six or eight inch, wow.
All right, so I guess start that?
Yeah.
Okay. If, if you need to, David, I got some beavers that can over, I can drop off over there to help you out.
Some beavers?
Yeah. I got a whole herd of them out back, and they're willing to move.
I go and visit my friend the beaver on Glenwood down by the, nobody skips property, every morning on there around quarter or six, and he's swimming by, we became very friendly, he doesn't run away anymore. And then I gotta look for the washout of the road, because there's snapping to the legs that keep getting washed out, I gotta keep burying them.
I'm trying my best.
Thanks, guys.
All right, take care.
Have a good night.
Yep. Well, that takes care of a bunch.
I'm gonna take a look back through my filing cabinet, see if I go back that.
I know you don't know a lot of stuff, but I'll find it back there. Okay, uh.
I presume based on the individuals not burying it, we're continuing this.
Hilltop Estates is not ready, uh, Dave gave Clea three options, I think it was, for continuation to whatever.
Well, you have a preference, which I have on here.
Yeah, two, two of them, I guess, were in August, and one was in September.
Nine thirteen.
I like nine thirteen if it, that's my opinion.
I'd say, obviously, Clea is not moving fast on this, on this thing, so.
So then we'll need a couple motions, one is for a continuance from seven twenty six twenty two to nine thirteen twenty two.
So moved.
Time of six forty five.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the second motion would be to extend the final action deadline from eleven one twenty twenty two to one three twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Still about six forty five, was it?
It was nine, what, what nine?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thank you.
Have we any, David, we, or Norm, have we any updated feedback from our attorneys through George and KP?
Thanks for asking, I apologize, I've been a little bit, actually, this is a two part answer. The issue of the zoning freeze has come up again, cause the original question was whether Bryce Lemon, Noble Hill, and Clearhill Two were subject to zoning freeze or not. That's come up recently because of Arrowhead, so we're looking at that question first, kinda deliberately.
Okay.
To see whether the subdivision is still, whether it's exempt or not. We do have the other questions, I need to look at one thing in particular regarding the rescission in mortgage question. Um, I think one, I think that the first question may inform the second.
Yeah.
And we are still in the process of resolving that first question.
Yeah, I was struggling when you said that, cause I thought that came off years ago, and based upon the growth management of them being exempt. That was moot point, in my opinion, but again, that's, that's the DPW chief's call.
Well, the issue is moratoria, whether actual or, or effective regarding sore extension hookups.
Yes.
Is, is a factor that would extend the life of the, of the subdivisions.
Correct.
And those three were done at the same time, uh, twelve eleven, two thousand six, all three of those.
Yes.
So they're really treated the same way, cause the same dynamics apply.
How long was the moratorium until twenty?
Well, that, that's the question.
Okay.
There have been declared moritorias by the select boards, and there was that could be effective moratorium because of the permit entity not issuing permits, which is not the town at a certain point in time.
Okay. All right.
So it's not.
It's not simple.
It's not simple.
All right, good enough.
So I apologize for that, it's kinda deliberate in, in the approach that we're taking to get to that question.
It's okay, I just want KP to answer the mortgage question as the way I interpreted it, and I'm fine.
Okay. So Bryce Lemon Estates, no reports?
No reports for any of the active subdivisions.
I always guarantee there's nothing.
Clea said they were coming in to start on that crossing last time he was in.
Yeah.
And obviously that hasn't happened, okay.
Well, the thing is, he's concentrating more on that phase one C or whatever the heck it is, and that was, I think he said, I think he said, he was gonna have all that work on the Brittle.
Oh, okay, all right, got it, that's right, Norm, I remember him saying that. Yep.
Brittle Estates, I have visited once or twice, they are still working on that first culvert crossing, I don't know how they make any money. Because every time I go over there, it seems as though they've got, you know, two or three major four guys working, and.
No progress?
Well, it was kinda one of these things, I forget when it was, two or three days ago. And they're laying these concrete blocks with head walls.
Yeah.
You know, and so forth, while they apparently could move one of these blocks over there, they use the excavator, lift it up, brought it over into place, it wouldn't fit.
So you take it back?
Took it back, guy comes over, takes out his ruler, measures the opening, okay, they had to fit it too, goes over, measures the block. Okay, and then all three of them walk off a hundred yards away to where they're storing all the other blocks.
And find the block that fits that size? Damn it, damn it, Bill, find one that's good.
Yeah. So.
All right.
Anyway.
But at this rate, we're kinda out, and we're not gonna get it done.
Well, not, not only that, the time before that I was over there, they had filled in all over the culverts. And they had the excavator in there, digging out that fill, cause it was just plain fill that they put in.
Digging it out.
It was digging it back out again, and then putting in crushed rock.
Cause he had no sub base blow to fill, is that it? Yeah, that's a.
My gosh.
I don't have that, yeah.
Well, and this gets back to, uh, I'll say it, where there should be an engineer that's in charge of this, as we've said, on site directing, when they're doing major. I mean, that's supposed to be his or her role.
Tell me something, has Quinn taken a look at this and seen this?
I was gonna, that was gonna be my next question, has Carl gone out there instead?
Yeah, cause.
But Carl said, doesn't, he doesn't accept structural.
That's it, that's a structural.
Yeah, he won't do anything, he said we gotta get a third party. So, I mean, who do we hire? Somebody from Weston and Sampson, cause they've got a structural engineering department? I don't know.
This is ridiculous.
Just sorry to interrupt, but I, you have requested these structural engineers' reports.
Yeah.
Based upon the specification, based upon the standards that he's accountable to inspect it for, and that's what you've been getting, information, at least on the first culvert, that's why you've requested for the other one.
But the fact they had to dig the, the base out of the car lot and replace it.
Well, you know, maybe, maybe that's a standard procedure, I don't know, I, I really don't know, that's always kind of stupid to me.
Yeah, I, that's wasted energy.
Now, fill to me is not.
It was structural. Subsoil type, you know?
And to me, and, and I would like Quinn just to have an idea of what they pulled, so he'd know in the future.
And to me, and, and I would like Quinn just to have an idea of what they pulled so he'd know in the future. It's not anything to do with the structure itself. Yeah, but we should, we should know what's built up that that road's gonna go over. Yeah. And if it's all fill, that's not gonna work out well in the long term for that road, other than it'll look like this. Yeah.
Well, like I say, as soon as they dug, they dug it back out, that's all, that's all we can say.
All right, what do we request? Because we haven't got any reports lately, have we, Dave?
Because it's been inactive.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a bad idea. Maybe ask for an update at this point from the air engineer.
Update on the culverts?
Building status, I guess, maybe is the, or construction status is probably what.
Yeah, detailed status.
I like that one better, Norm.
What do you, I'm not sure, you, you got, what you got from Blair last time, with the update on the project as a whole, what are you looking for here in particular?
Specifically, constructionally.
The culvert, culvert, that's right.
Yeah, the culvert. There's, there's structural engineers' detailed construction report of, of the culverts. And we were still waiting on the second culvert's engineering that hadn't been completed yet.
Right.
Which, that shouldn't happen. We should have that with the completed plans, so we were being generous in letting them wait, but I'm getting to the point, I would really like those plans.
Yeah.
So we got a complete package.
Yeah.
Instead of, you know, the day before they start, here it is.
But they gotta be getting close to starting to work.
Yeah.
Okay, Britton Estates, Bear Hill Two.
What's up with Arrowhead?
Only thing is, there is one foundation in, I think it's in, and now backfilled.
Could you just repeat what you said?
There's one foundation in.
Oh, okay.
Up on Arrowhead.
He said he sold all the lots. He's got, he's got the building permits to do it, to put them in, I guess.
Only got one building permit, I think.
So far.
But I thought we were not gonna allow him to move, anybody to move in there.
Right, no occupancy permits. Which I believe the building inspector is aware of.
Right, the first one that's been issued has been conditioned that no certificate of occupancy can be issued until that country was abandoned for vehicle traffic and the restoration has started.
And the planning board got their money.
That's a poor.
Far.
Each house lot, planning board was supposed to get two hundred, wasn't it two hundred dollars or something like that?
Two fifty that was gonna be put into it.
For Arrowhead, yeah, that's the way it was written.
Anyway.
Yeah.
But that's all that, uh, I saw happening up on, well, I shouldn't say that's not all. They were moving some dirt around here and there. Didn't make an awful lot of sense to me, but they were, they had a tractor with a bucket in the backyard.
David's, or Norm, either one, or anybody on the board, is Arrowhead, which is Bear Hill Two, is that one of the exempted subdivisions from the growth management?
Okay.
Well, I'd like to ask you the question while we're.
Working on it? Okay. I just was curious because, um, an individual person in Rutland had come to me about what's the requirement per month of building permits? And I said, from my memory, I said, don't quote me on this, I think it's a, uh, three building permits a month is allowed, but they can be added. If somebody takes out two and one in January, February, in March, now you've got three plus three more, so you could do six. It keeps getting additive until the end of the year, then it starts over again. So in December, there could be thirty-six permits if nobody pulled them.
Yeah.
It hasn't happened.
No.
I mean, right now, they're on pace to issue all thirty-six, just like they were last year. Just like most likely next year, even with interest rates going up.
Yes, yes. So I told, I told this individual, I said, you need to ask, have your builder ask the building inspector on how many are left and what order you're, where you're at. So that's all I can give you for advice.
Yeah, I gotta get back uptown because I was gonna ask Lynn for a printout of that for the.
She'll handwrite it to you. She's done it for me already once.
Last year she gave it, she had a.
A printout?
A printout.
Wow. She gave me handwritten last time, then I had to go through and figure out which was exempt per the growth management and which one were actuals, so.
Okay, uh, planning board, bylaw subcommittee.
Uh, last meeting, we had, uh, two members present, Norm and I, and Dave was there. And actually, we had a kind of an interesting conversation because we've, uh, kind of, I was able to clarify some of my thoughts and, uh, looking forward to the next meeting and going back to my agenda.
When would your next meeting be?
Next week to, a week from tonight.
August second.
August second, Arky Two. Make sure that, anything. Members source is keeping me quite busy, our construction.
So do you have any other?
No, I, I, I think I can make that one. I think I can make that one.
Yep.
Do you know of anyone who's using that room?
That, that room's available.
Yeah. What time, six thirty?
Yes.
Well, guess what?
I, I got a question. Um, I saw on the calendar website, or I got some update, that there's an individual going for a car repair or dealership on Berry Paxton. I wasn't sure if that was in our southern, just our southern, uh, town center area or not.
Yeah.
So if we haven't changed that yet, how can the select board approve that?
We haven't changed what?
Allowing, um, auto repair or auto dealerships in the, um, town centers. Village centers, because if we haven't done, I'm not saying we won't, I'm just saying it hasn't been approved. How can they issue a, an approval?
Where, where did you see that?
Um, it came in. I get the email updates from.
Well, it depends where it is because I think part of it is that. Tamika's got her hand up.
Yep.
Um, if I may, it's on the property of the gentleman who submitted the request for the zoning bylaw change.
There you go. So.
I thought he was in, in the town center district.
Yes, that's what I thought too.
Yes.
He's in the village center.
He's in the village center district.
I mean, that's what I mean, thank you.
And he doesn't, and we hadn't approved that last meeting and got put back to committee.
Ha, has he formally requested it?
Yes.
Of the select board?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not him, though. It's a different individual who is operating the business, who has opened the business on a portion of the property at one seventy-five A Berry Paxton Road.
But it's still, it's not.
It's not, it's not zone hasn't gone before the town.
That's my only point is that the cart's before the horse here.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I was getting at and I just wanted to make the board aware of it.
The, I'm still confused.
We have to assume the select board knows what they're doing.
But we did not.
No, we would not assume that. Um, because I thought you got, Marilyn, you guys had worked out the verbiage for that and it's ready to go for the, the fall town meeting, but it's not at the fall town meeting yet, so.
I see.
But it had the public hearing on it.
Is allowing him to do it and cha, we're changing.
Yeah, we're just updating the village center, but legally, it's not there yet, so.
Yeah.
So issuing a license to do that, no, isn't correct in my mind. Yeah, here it is, August, August twenty-second is the hearing for Star Auto Sales. There's an application, a business certificate and a public hearing notice on the twenty-second. And the application is for one seventy-five A, like Tamika said, Berry Paxton Road.
Auto sale and repair of.
It's a class two license to sell used autos.
Yep, and that's not. I mean, I'm not looking to shoot down business in Rutland by any means. I just want the rules followed as per they are. We're gonna change it, I get that, but it's not changed yet, no.
But across the street, that fellow's got cars that he sells, but wasn't that grandfathered in?
I believe so, could be.
So I guess what I'm saying is just to be proactive, shouldn't we send a nice email to the select board indicating that it's not allowed as to date in the village center at one seventy-five A Berry Paxton Road?
I believe it's simpler than that, or that's a part of it. Once we get notification on viewpoint that such a permit is out there, then we will respond.
Okay.
The planning office will respond with the planning board's comments.
I'm good with that.
I'm assuming it's gonna be transmitted as a viewpoint. I don't, it just hasn't yet.
That's right.
Yeah, so once that happens, we'll just have the note.
I just, just making sure, that's all I wanna do. Again, I don't wanna hold up somebody's business, but until it gets on the books, I don't think we should be issuing licenses for people to do stuff that's not allowed because it's sort of being counterdictive to our bylaws.
Do you wanna hold off until the view, this viewpoint thing, or should you still send an email?
Well, the effect of, this, the proper way to communicate this is through viewpoint, using that viewpoint, online permitting.
That's the purpose of viewpoint.
Yeah, permits are distributed to various boards and committees for review, depending on the nature of the permit. This one would go, would be widely distributed. What happens with that system is our comments are collected and then distributed back to the permit granting authority, in this case, the select board. So it does.
I just was trying, Dave, what I was trying to do was not have this public hearing on the twenty-second and take up this guy's time, expense and everything, or individuals, a guy, individuals' time and expense on doing this when legally it's not permitted now, so I, I guess I was trying to help kill the situation until it gets passed by the town in fall town meeting.
I think what ha, what happens is there's a, is a notice and requirement because it's a public hearing. So that notice was, 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 is being done as it should be.
Yeah.
This is information that's not being found. Um, the comments will be distributed and perhaps the hearing request will be withdrawn once the applicant finds out about this.
Okay.
Or it may otherwise be a factor in the permit granting authority's willingness to issue it. Uh, but the processes are playing out as they should be.
Okay.
That's the purpose of, in the comments, so.
Just hate wasting people's time is the only reason I'm, but again, I'm fine. Let, let it follow the procedure. That's good for me.
And I guess to further the point, the, um, there was an option for the applicant to come before this board with a pre-application conference to generally describe what the applicant would like to do and have a generalized site plan and get a sense of whether this would be proper before the board. The applicant's aware of that option and has not pursued it.
Well, even, even if we're in, let's say it's next year and the individual wants to put a business in there, still, unless it's by right, they still have to do a site plan review, correct?
There was a, there was a building, the building commissioner weighed in on this. He had an option that the applicant could pursue to see if this could fit into some other use category in the existing VC zoning district. And to get a sense of the board on whether it agreed with that or not. That has not even happened.
Okay, all right.
In addition to the other things that we just discussed about an actual zoning bylaw change to make that consistent with how auto sales are treated in the TC zone.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not a problem with them getting it. I'm just saying, if he's gonna put a business there, my thought process was he still has to go through, he or she has to still go through the site plan review.
Well, that's, that's the point. There's an awareness of the, of that. There's an awareness of the zoning bylaw change. There's an awareness that it's been reviewed and determined that it's gonna be ready for.
I'm beating this horse to death. I'm gonna walk away. Good enough.
No, but it's, it's, I'm glad to bring, hear it brought up.
Yeah.
I just, I'm just hoping that nobody's trying to take a shortcut.
That's what I was getting at. I just didn't want, wanna make sure the individual knows that there's a process that has to be followed. Okay, good enough.
Like I say, not only site plan review, we're putting that back in as a special permit.
Yes. That's right. Okay.
One of the things that, it wasn't an official meeting, Tamika goes, I don't, you don't, you don't need to put this in the, the minutes, but one of the things that Norm and I and Dick figured out is that you can't really have a home occupation business in the village center district without buying a house first.
Yeah, because otherwise it'd be just a business then. It'd be, it'd be a true business. I'd have to go through that list of businesses. Yeah.
You'd have to, you'd have to rent a space to do a business because you'd have to own the home
Yeah.
to have a home occupation there.
And that's why we did the businesses downstairs when we were developing this and the residences upstairs. So you didn't have, you could rent, do whatever upstairs and have a business downstairs. And you didn't have to, quote, own the building. So. But that idea, I don't think's been put in place anywhere. I take that back. I think that's true with Jim Susi's.
Oh, yeah.
Real estate.
Real estate.
Because his wife's got the business downstairs and they rent upstairs. Only place, the only example I can think of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, the real estate's in the separate building.
No, no.
Same building?
Same building. It's the first, yeah, it's, it's basically taken up the apartment by the road and then the other three, um, townhouses, whatever, or I shouldn't say towns, apartments are rented out. So they got four renters in there, if I'm not mistaken. One above Jim's wife.
Yeah.
Below is her business.
Yeah.
Then two here and one over in the corner.
I didn't think that was, that one building was two-story.
Yeah.
It is.
Yes.
I wonder if they drive down there and see.
Still a nice building.
Excellent, nice building.
It is.
Well, if there's nothing more to come before the board, I'll accept the motion.
To adjourn. I don't have anybody out there.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Can't believe it. Again, early.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask an unofficial question?
Yeah.
Does anybody know, I know you guys do know, what is happening on the corner of, where they just fixed, put in new, like Pleasant Dale and one twenty-two, I guess it is, where that, where four corners mobile?
Yeah.
And that bunch of stuff cracked. Is anything happening there? Is there any legal stuff happening there?
It's basically an abandoned building, if I'm not mistaken, because it was, it was auto repair and then that.
Well, there's people working there and they've got that little cracked restaurant.
Yeah, we've got that taken care of because that came before us and we approved that.
But the rest of it is just disgusting.
And then, and I think, I think he, he or she rents that out for school bus.
Yeah.
They have had, I have.
School buses.
In the back.
Yeah, in the back.
Right.
That's as much as I know.
But you're talking about the building itself.
The building and just all, that whole corner, there's another little shed back there.
When you said there were people working there, are you referring to the?
I've seen people just in and out with vehicles and, I mean, I never see a whole lot going on there, but something's happening.
It used to be a, a, an auto fix place there.
Well, I was the last one he fixed because he put my, uh, he put my, uh, uh, exhaust system on my old Ford truck and then basically went out of business after that. Wasn't me, though. I didn't.
You drove them right out, huh?
And we have no way of, we have no jurisdiction to make anything like that that's, I mean, you've okayed the business with the little cracked thing to clean it up. I'm sure we don't.
I have to wait for people to come to us.
This is the, what is it, um?
Phase asshole station is what the name of it was way to heck back.
He did.
That's old.
And, and not only that, it had a twenty-one B problem, contaminated soils. Good evening.
Aye. One thing I can say is, is it wouldn't be us if you wanted to make a complaint because of, of, of unsanitary conditions, the Board of Health would be the place to go.
It's just that it's ugly and I drive by there, you know, continuously. One last question. Aren't there five people on the board? One last question. Aren't there five people on the board?
Yes.
Yes.
I've never seen a fifth.
Well, that's a good point.
See, we, we don't know if we're still on air or not. Peter, are we on air?
You are.
We, we already closed the meeting.
There.
We were adjourned. The meeting's adjourned, so.
We adjourned.
Thanks.
Tamika left.
The meeting's adjourned.
Take the, uh, turn of the night.